Okay, it being six oh two on Thursday, March seventh, two thousand and four, I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning, Historic Commission Meeting to Order. With that, can we have the roll?
Commissioner Feck.
Here.
Kruger.
Here.
Stenick.
Yes.
Scarpelli.
Here.
Brunner.
Here.
Reyes-Brauer.
Here.
And Myers.
Here.
Okay, we have a full, full attendance today. Fantastic. So then we move on, moving on to our first item of business, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the February first, two thousand and four meeting minutes?
A motion to approve. A second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, any amendments that need to be made to these minutes?
Okay, Commissioner Feck.
Yes.
Kruger.
Yes.
Stenick.
Yes.
Scarpelli.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Reyes-Brauer.
Yes.
And Myers.
Yes.
Great. Okay, so today we don't have any, well, is there anyone in the, in the audience who would like to make a comment on agenda or non-agenda items? No. Okay, moving on. We have no new business, no historic commission items, so we're moving on to other business, which is really a two-part item, meeting attendance and regular meetings, start time discussions, and recommendation. So what I first want to start out with is, and I assume we all have taken a look at the packet, but I'll, I'll say it for, for the record. There was a piece of ordinance passed in, this was in December.
September.
September of last year, that put guidelines around attendance and automatic triggers when people don't make enough meetings. And this really, this applies to our commissions and our committees. So that's our commission, the existing Art Council, and the to-be-established Depot Commission. So what's important here is the text of this is if you fail to miss three, or if you miss three meetings in a row, or you miss more than half in a year, you're gonna, it's gonna be taken as an automatic resignation from, from the board. And, you know, from our perspective, you know, I totally understand why, why this was put in place. You know, we had some real issues with meeting quorum last year, or over the last couple of years, and it's a, a pretty impactful thing. You know, I, as a, as a resident, I had an, had a variance that I almost had to do, and it really stressed me out, you know, trying to hit that meeting, and if I would have missed that meeting, I would have had to delay construction for a month. That could have pushed off my construction, might not have even been able to do it for a year. So we have things like that. We have, you know, our businesses, we have the exact same things. They have opening timelines, so if we miss meetings, that can delay their whole, their whole business plan a month. And it also costs, you know, our staff time to put together the packets and send out to the newspapers. All of our stuff has to be published in articles. So, you know, we waste the village's, you know, staff time and, you know, direct resources doing all this publishing.
So we charge businesses or anyone that's applying for a special use variance, whatnot. And we also request that they provide us with pre-stamped envelopes for the two hundred and fifty-foot radius, and a list of property owners, and then staff stuffs those mails, letters with the notices of public hearing, and then we drop them off in the mail. But when we, when we cancel it based on quorum, then staff has to do all that. We have to reissue all the letters, cost the villages the stamp time, money, and re-notice it. It's expensive to have noticed in the Daily Herald, it's a couple hundred dollars. Then now the village has to pay to re-notice everything again.
Yeah.
So there is a cost, and then there's, you know, salary time for staff to go over.
Now, so yeah, I totally understand their take. I'd also add, from my perspective, I really like everybody being here all the time. You know, I recognize we've got a good mix of people from out the village, from throughout the village, you know, have different perspectives. And a lot of what we're trying to do is understand what's best for the village. And I, you know, I want, I want you guys all here, and I want to hear your opinions. I want you to disagree with me. You know, I want, I want to hear everything that you guys have to offer. You know, it's, I know I have blind spots, and I think we all can understand. We have blind spots, and we look at things, you know, based on our history with the village. So, you know, even if we have quorum, it's great for us all to be here like tonight. This is what I'd love to have. And, you know, just, you know, really try to, you know, this is the, you know, get in trouble, get expelled type of rule. I'd like this to be much better than that, right? So I did print out here, this is my thing. I'll try to explain it a little bit. This is, I ran some, some probability analysis on meetings based on attendance and like meetings that, you know, the likelihood that we wouldn't miss quorum. So this first chart right there shows you how, as the bottom is like, what is the average attendee rate? So like, if it's seventy, that'd be like, we all made three out of, I mean, seven out of ten meetings. You can see that that starts pulling up the probability that we will make it a year without missing a quorum. You can see as you get up there towards the end, how, how big of an improvement just a little bit more, more makes. So where I have it circled there, that's pretty much, you know, if we all made seventy-five percent, so nine out of twelve meetings, you miss three a year, it's more likely than not that we wouldn't miss quorum for a year. But you can see if we move up a little bit more, if you only miss two, it's like, we'll go like multiple years.
But not consecutive?
No, not yet, well. And it is also assuming that we're all having even distribution of missing meetings. You know, likely, we would, you know, in the summer, maybe we're more likely to miss meetings in the summer because of vacations and, and things like that. But it gives you an idea how important, you know, just maybe one more meeting attendance can, can make. And also, if we're all not making meetings, if, if, if we all were only coming half of the time, we'd miss quorum all the time.
And I think what would be also recommended by staff is if you know you're not gonna be there for work, or you're gonna be out of town, let me know ahead of time. Let us know ahead of time, and even if, you know, you have a couple commissioners here, email me tonight, say, I can't make the main meeting. Well, then I can tell businesses that are applying.
Oh, I see, yeah.
They have a main meeting, so don't.
Yeah.
Expense your money and time on that.
Yeah. And, and we do have the opportunity to, you know, sometimes you could maybe, there'd be an opportunity to pull something forward.
We could do a special meeting.
You know, we can, you know, the more information we have, the better.
The more you communicate to me, the easier it will be to, for me to keep in touch with the business community that's been applying. And I try my best to post the notices of public hearing on our website and let you guys know that we have a meeting next, next date. So you guys know, oh, that I gotta tell Franco, I'm not gonna make that one. That sort of stuff.
Yeah. So, yeah.
So it's generally speaking, basically, it's the first Thursday of the month?
Yes. That's what we have right now.
So notebooking, maybe you should say, just kidding.
Well, I mean, I try not.
Well, that's what I'm gonna try to do, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, unless it's a special one, like there was another one that we had in January, I think?
Well, we had to come into that.
Yeah, a special meeting.
He would let us, he would let us.
Yeah, we did that because the petitioner at the time wasn't gonna be in, in January.
Right, right.
So we.
And we contacted you guys, we contacted everyone ahead of time about that.
Who was available.
But that one, you know, not as, you know, that's a.
It's a one-off.
Yeah, one-off, and it'd be more under, you know, obviously, everyone would be more understanding of missing those meetings because we can't, you can't plan ahead. But yeah, so planning ahead, and then, you know, there's gonna be things where you definitely, you know, you have a vacation you need to go, or you have a work thing where you need to go. But then what we really wanted to also be able to then handle is, you know, if there's an emergency on a given day. Like, that happens, and it's, you know, just let Franco know if, you know, you, you can't make it. Or you're sick and you're really contagious. We don't need you here if you're really sick, you know, but letting us know, because we had one, and I don't know if you guys, I mean, obviously, all of you weren't here when it happened. We had one where it happened, we were all here, and the business was here, and we couldn't start, and the lawyer was, we couldn't start the meeting because we didn't have quorum, and we just, we figured it out while sitting here.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
That's, that's, that's the worst situation.
I think that was a straw that broke the camel's back on this, and that's why we should have these conversations.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's where we stand. Do you guys have any, any questions, anything you'd like to add, any comments?
Well, for me, sometimes, I don't know if six o'clock works for everybody, but like, I barely made it today in time because I am coming
Yeah.
From the city, and sometimes I do have later meetings, so, but I do tell Franco if I can't make it.
Yeah, so that's gonna be the next part of this discussion, is we're gonna talk about if there's a time or a day that would make it easier for us to make, make the meetings. So there's been speculation, you know, by various people in town that, that would make a difference, but I want all of us to decide individually, you know, say that this time is as good or better if we want to look at moving it. I.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I have no preference, as long as it's after five.
Right.
But I prefer later, you know, I prefer later than six, personally. I think there was some talk with setting it at six, it would make it easier for businesses that had a normal nine-to-five hour in town, they could just come after work and not go somewhere and have to hang around for an hour or whatever. But, you know, the most important thing is that we have, you know, good attendance, and we can provide, you know, we can provide that feedback from all seven commissioners. That would be the best thing, I think, for our village and for our businesses, you know. So yeah, okay, they have to wait another hour, but they actually get to have a meeting, and they get to have more, you know, more voices, you know, providing, you know, the best advice, I think, for, for the given topic. So, so, so we're gonna talk about it.
Okay.
Anything other than that that we'd like to talk about?
I'd like to say I could definitely do a better job at making more meetings, and I'm sure that I'm a definite reason that this would, that this is coming about. And I'm gonna do the best I can, and there, there will be an improvement of my attendance. I'm not gonna put any blame on anything or any excuses or anything like that, I'm just simply gonna do better. And definitely, for the rest of my term, I'm gonna make as many meetings as I can. And there's gonna be a noticeable improvement in my attendance.
Okay.
And then hopefully, if I'm reappointed, then I can further improve, and if I get the.
I think you have three twenty-twenty-six.
Good deal. Yeah. So I wanna apologize in the board, into the residents, and especially the village board, because I know that, you know, I just made it harder. So I'm gonna improve that, so I appreciate it, and hopefully you guys accept my apology.
Oh, I very much appreciate that.
Does time, have any bearing for start time?
Uh, some issues that I had was trying to work shifts. The one that I missed that probably affected the businesses, I was gonna come while on shift at the, at the fire department across the river. We caught a call during it, and that's when I knew, okay, I can't balance both of this stuff. So, and it wasn't even a call that, well, we'll leave that there. But, yeah, not gonna balance both anymore.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess we meet in the first Thursday of the month. If you know your shifts ahead of time, you can just let me know so I can let Cam know that these months, we know that Charlie's not gonna be here.
Yep. Yeah, and I, I work every third day.
I don't know how your schedule's.
I work twenty-four hours every third day, so I know my schedule in advance.
Even, great.
Yep, so I can, I can definitely.
Well, sit, you know, if you want, I mean, you could sit down.
Twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
You got it, yeah.
I mean, you could sit down and go over dates that you won't be here, so this way you can aid us in planning.
Yep. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So yeah, I guess that, that is an interesting, I can, can dovetail a little bit then of a side topic that I would like to cover, which is, is the, the reappointments. I think right now we have Maureen, yours is coming up in April. So we're gonna have to, well, are you planning, would you like to be reappointed? Is it, do you want to continue working on this?
Yeah, you happen to continue working.
Okay, yeah, so I don't get to do that, but we, we, we can talk to Jeff then about that, that you're, you're interested in staying on. There is no one else this year. I think maybe originally you were gonna be this year, but.
I'm every year.
Yeah, yeah. It's two this year.
No, sometimes it's two.
And it's just one this year, and then it's two next year. It's you and me for twenty-twenty-five.
That's what I heard.
And then the, you three are out.
I don't know how Commissioner Scarpelli's appointment works, because it's a holdover, there's no expiration date. So I, I guess I would seek clarifying, if you, I don't know if you want clarification on that. I, I can't answer when his term expires.
Oh, it, it, it is technically.
But I really, I don't think I have a term. I, I'm just here until the village president decides to appoint somebody in my place.
Yes.
So you're temporary?
What?
You're a temporary?
Yeah, so, so it's, Frank is staying on.
I am the biggest troublemaker here.
He has, he has, he has fulfilled his obligation, you know. He said he would fulfill a term, which he has fulfilled. And then he has chosen to stay on. Thank you, Frank. And keep, which, you know, he, he asked me a lot in the beginning, and, and I, I was definitely a favor. I think Frank, you've been a great asset to the village, to this commission, over these last couple of years. So I think it makes a lot of sense, but he's, he's coming here because he feels like he can really help, and he has no obligation to come. But, yeah, so.
Thank you.
So it's great, I, you know, you know, I think. So this would be the thing, like, if you aren't reappointed, you, you could also follow in this path until, until Jeff, or our president reappoints someone for that seat. Or, you know, like, like I just said in regards to Frank, you would have completed your, what you said you were gonna do. So, you know, you can ride off into the sunset, and everyone would be like.
No hard feelings.
Right, yeah, exactly. So, so, I mean, that, that's where it is, and that's how, how I think we all should look at our terms. But obviously, you know, if the term wasn't what you thought it was gonna be when you signed up, you know, I know it's new for a lot of us, and, you know, I, I understand, you know, if, if the, if you can't make the meetings, and, you know, it just gets too complicated because of other things, you know, we can step down, right? That's, that's better than, you know, I think.
Terminated.
Yeah, well, you know, if you don't come, I guess you're just terminated. But, yeah, I mean, the, the thing is, is, you know, impacting quorum is, is worse than, you know, that's, that's the worst thing. That's the thing that I really want to avoid. So, so yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna try, I've been talking to Jeff about additional appointments, and getting some people on, you know, you know, because I think there's, Connie, I think you might, are you still thinking of staying on for another year, or?
Well, I was gonna talk to Franco tonight about a, a different council over there.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna talk to him a little more depth and then make a decision. Because I was told, you asked me in the email, I wanna do both, and somebody said I couldn't. Somebody told me I couldn't. Now, I won't say who, I'll tell you that later, but I don't know if it's true or not.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay. So I'm trying, yeah, one, one last thing before that. So, so I'm trying to get some more, you know, this set of appointees kind of in place, or a, or let's say, a vetted group from, from Jeff. And, and if we do have any turnover, which it sounds like we may not, still not, not, see, I'll do the, you know, I would want it to be more of a transition than what, what we did before. So even, like, let's say hypothetically, you weren't staying. I would have asked, you know, if we get an appointment in April, Maureen, could you, or he starts talking about it, and like, could you stay on through that, and maybe have them come and visit before they decide, and see what we're actually doing. However, that can, can be done.
Well, that's what I said. Yeah, that's what I said. I said I would stay till you have somebody else, if that's the case.
Yeah, 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 which is good. That's good, great. Yeah, because I know, I remember that first meeting we had after we all got put on, and it was, it was, it was an experience.
What?
Yeah, I don't know how that would have went without Frank being next to you. Right, so thank you, Frank. Yes, yeah. So, okay, so then now on to meeting times. Now, the, the biggest one that I've heard is moving it to seven.
That's what we had originally.
Yes.
What was it?
Seven o'clock. And then, you know, if anybody's working, usually they're home by seven o'clock.
Yeah.
You know, I think that would probably make it easier for everybody. So.
The only thing with that, I'm just, I mean, I live down the street, so it doesn't matter for me.
Yeah.
But getting, if it's a two-hour meeting, sometimes we run in, not very often, but sometimes.
Yeah.
Most really, six-thirty might be fine.
Six-thirty?
Yeah.
So I, with, with, okay, we can talk about six-thirty. So, I mean, because I'd say the other thing about seven, I mean, if we did seven, you would definitely want to eat dinner before, you know, and because it could go until nine.
Yes.
And that's pretty much what you would, you would have to do.
Right.
I think, or that's how, what I would have to do.
Yeah.
So, so six-thirty, though, do, do, do we like six-thirty more than seven?
I do.
Whatever, yeah, whatever helps get, does it make any difference for you?
Doesn't make any difference to me, I think that.
Me neither, because I live like.
Yeah.
And if I'm not here, it's because I'm out of town. Which I can do a better job of telling you that ahead of time, and then I'm done, but yeah, time doesn't matter, it can happen.
I think you and Charlie, it's like, time is not gonna be relevant to you two because of your work.
Correct.
You're gone all day.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so it sounds like really, it's, it's, Lillian, you're the one where it will make the biggest difference.
Yeah.
And, and, and would you think that, I mean, do you really think six-thirty's enough?
I think so, yeah, because, like, right now I had a good ten minutes to spare, and that was enough to, like, let my dog out, run, and then come over here just like five minutes before, or something.
I prefer you not to ever feel impacted by trying to get here.
I think there's one additional consideration that we need to consider is whether we like to call ourselves this or not, we're public servants. We're here serving, serving the public. And we act as the group that hears all the public hearings. The village board does not hear them because we hear them, and then we make recommendations. I think the meeting needs to be convenient for the public as well. And if you were to go to all of the other municipalities around us, their start times are either seven or seven-thirty. We're the only village that starts at six.
Really?
So, and I just believe that, Lily, in your case, I can tell you, a, a good friend of mine and former village president, Dan O'Leary, worked downtown Chicago on Whacker Drive, didn't get out of work until five o'clock. By the time he got on, got to the train, got on the train and got here, he was just pulling into the village parking lot minutes before a seven o'clock meeting. So while I appreciate you, you can make six-thirty, I think for our general public, it should be seven o'clock. And Connie, I do, I do recognize meetings could go, could go till nine-thirty, ten. I've been, I'm not proud of this. I've been in village meetings that went till two in the morning.
Yeah, I'm proud. I can't, I can't do that. Sorry, yeah.
And, and at this level, hopefully that shouldn't happen. And, and the only reason a village board meeting went that way is we had a very dysfunctional board, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I was part of it.
I understand what you're saying, but usually our, our group here, people come in, and I don't, I've never seen anybody that crowded here versus the village meetings where it's packed, you can't even sit down. And I, and they're what, what time do they start?
They start at six. They, they start at six, although the, these front tables are taken up by village staff.
Okay.
So it's village staff, and then, then usually they have presentations and things like that in the audience. So.
I think, I guess what I'm trying to say, if, if you're, if you're a concerned citizen and you wanna know you're gonna be here at six o'clock, that's what I'm trying to say. That's all. You're gonna make time because you wanna be here for that meeting, or protest, or whatever you wanna do. That's all. Yeah, I actually.
That's true.
I mean, I, I, I don't think I could, I could be okay with after seven, mainly because I, I know some, some older residents who start going to bed at seven-twenty. So, you know, Sarah's parents. So, you know.
No, I, I don't think it needs to be later than seven, but I just throw that out there.
So, so I think that maybe the, so would, and we'd be okay with seven in general?
Yeah, hesitant. I would say hesitant.
Okay.
I'm with her.
Hesitant, oh, so you would have wanted that.
I, I, I like the six-thirty. Because usually, like I said, you know, I'll be rushing, and this way, if it is a two-hour meeting, I could have my dinner afterwards, so.
And then you, yeah, so you're, yeah, okay, so.
Not for nothing, but a few other villages that have a village board agendas that start at seven P M. Not all of them, but some of them have a regular scheduled committee, the whole meeting that starts at six. So it just kinda rolls over.
Oh, well, it's in the.
Yeah, so.
Not everyone, everyone's different.
So then I think the guidance that we're gonna say is we really think six-thirty would be better for us, for our commission, both in, in increasing and not going any farther. But there is another concern that has been expressed by our, our village president that the potential candidate pool for other trustees would appreciate the seven. So it isn't anyone on here now, but if he's feeling that he can't get, you know, qualified candidates that can make six-thirty.
So in other words, he already has a certain people that said they can make seven, sounds like.
I, that's what he told me. So, so there is that. So we can say, the way that I would say the recommendation to the board is, from our perspective, with what we understand, and in, in regards to our attendance and general, I think, being better for the community, for pushing it to six-thirty is what we would recommend. If there is additional criteria that is to be considered, do not.
We can change it.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, it, it could be, but if we don't feel it would impact our attendance rate, it would be for another purpose, other than.
It's not, it's either you know you're gonna be going or you don't.
Yeah, yeah.
What's with the caveat of one person? The, the time, did you say the time won't affect?
So, so, so going later. So we wanna go to six-thirty, but like, if you wanted to change it to seven, seven-thirty.
That wouldn't affect attendance.
Yeah, it, I mean, it would start negatively impacting. You know, I know seven-thirty, I bet Connie would, would not be.
It might be, it might be like this.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Might get negative feedback from the businesses that wait here until seven-thirty.
Yeah.
So we, we feel very comfortable with six-thirty, if, and, and that would be the best for our commission. And we would tolerate a seven if that is, got some upside outside of our, you know, outside our immediate concern.
Do we have any statistics on a couple years back, when we had a seven o'clock, you know, what the attendance was versus the six o'clock that we've had the last year and a half?
I didn't look that up because of the different numbers that were.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So when did this commission start then?
P M Z?
Yeah.
It's probably been around for decades.
What's that?
I didn't know, well, no, I didn't know how many were on it.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, there were nine previously.
Well, right, well, when I first got put on in nineteen ninety-five, there were two separate commissions. There was a planned commission, and then there was a zoning board of appeals. And the planned commission and the historic board were one commission of seven members. And then the, the Z B A was another commission of seven separate people. Then in two thousand and two or three, due to trying to get quorums on both sides of that wasn't working, they combined the two into what we currently have today. And, but they made it a nine-member board.
So how do we get to this point then?
Jeff, after Jeff got elected village president, he's the one that shifted it, because there was some, when we were a nine-member board, there were a couple times when we didn't have quorum. So he thought by reducing the number of commissioners that, because it, on a, on a nine-member board, you need five for quorum. So on a, on a seven-member board, you only need four for quorum. So he thought that by reducing the number, and there, I think there's even been some talk about reducing it to five, then you only need three for quorum. But, so that was a thought that was out there, and.
So that's how we got here today, is because they changed the whole thing, and then everybody was out, and we were the new in?
Yeah, right, correct, yeah.
Okay, that's all right.
So, and I, I would say, I mean, I, I ran the stats on nine and eleven and thirteen boards, and you get more tolerance if people are making, still making it, but if you have people who are only making sixty percent, more people is bad. Yes. If they're making over seventy-five percent, more people is good. So fundamentally, what you need, you need a good set of people that make a lot of meetings, you know, so.
Now, I guess to that point, Franco, are you aware, and Sarah, I don't know if you are, I believe there's an ordinance that allows, or at least there was, that allowed for telephonic participation. And because we are a home or a unit of government, we were even able. And because we are a home rule unit of government, we were even able to say that you didn't have to have a quorum present. The village board has, even though they're home rule, they're restricted by state statute, that they can allow a trustee to participate telephonically, but they still have to have a quorum present here. But either way, I, I would enjoy that, that if there's a quorum here, but I can't be here, but I could participate telephonically, I would like to have that, that, I would, I would like all of us to have that option so that we're, we're still engaging in the process, it's just that it's via speakerphone or something of that nature.
So your vote would still count?
What?
You would vote would still count?
Your, your votes, your votes still count, but if, if we had to follow the same rules, the same statutory rules that the village board follows, we would still need four members here.
Oh, physically?
But then of the, of the three that could be absent, they could participate telephonically.
So you could, yeah, let's review that. I thought the votes didn't count, but.
No, okay.
Yeah, on the board, the votes don't count.
Oh, it doesn't?
Okay, because they don't report it, but it doesn't, you need, you need the, to pass something, you still need that majority of a quorum.
Right, correct, yes.
And they need to be the present people.
Would you like me to speak or not?
Sure, if, yes, if you want to come on up.
Say who you are.
Say your name and your address.
I am Sarah Britton, and I'm here to answer Frank's question. So as, my understanding for how it works for the board specifically is the telephonic communication is only if you are away for work.
Correct.
So it's, we, you can't be on vacation and call in.
Okay.
You have to be out for work.
Work, medical.
Yeah, did we add a, a, I think.
I think we added medical.
Work, work, medical, and then the state just added to it.
Yes.
Pregnancy, if you're, if you're in labor in the hospital, now I don't.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's going to have more meeting if they're. I'm sorry. But yeah.
A board meeting may be more painful.
So there are, there are legal exceptions. I, again, don't know if we can define something different as home rule or not, we may still have to stay, just state standards. I would prefer that if we do telephonic, that we, I mean, personal opinion.
Sure.
That we keep it to those standards, right? Don't, you can't just all not be.
Yeah.
Call it instead. I'd rather be in my sweatpants most days, but you have to actually show up.
Yeah.
And yes, as far as the votes counting, I think that the, it's like, as long as the majority vote, your vote counts, right? You, they take your vote. But the majority still has to be won by the people who are present for quorum. So in other words, the person casting a vote through the telephone.
Telephone.
Can't be the deciding vote.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
So if it's a totally split vote, it's more complicated to have somebody.
Now, they got all states, you know, like AI voice generators, and we're sure it's you.
Oh, yeah, right, what about that now?
Yeah, that's part of, I think it's part of the reason.
I'm going to go sit down, but I think that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's part of the reason, though.
Well, if, if you do it via Zoom.
Yeah, right, well, that's, that's why it's that special thing during, during COVID. See, yeah, because we never had to do Zoom meetings, the board meetings were before in all over Zoom.
Right.
Yeah, you turn your cameras on.
Yeah, this, the code says a trust, trustee may be permitted to attend a meeting of the village board via teleconference where the member is prevented from physically attended, attending because of personal illness or disability, employment purposes, or the business of the public body, or a family or other emergency. So those are your three reasons.
Right, yeah, and, and just in the last four or five months, the governor added, if you're pregnant, if you're in labor.
Sounds, sounds like a family or other.
Yeah, family emergency to me.
And it does state that a quorum must be present at the meeting, and no more than two trustees may attend a scheduled meeting via telephonically.
Okay, and they do it, I mean, I've been to several meetings where someone was telephonically connected.
Well, that, and does it also say, Franco, does the, does the quorum that's here, do they have to vote that day to let them participate?
I don't see it, but I'll look into that with our attorney if anything's changed.
That's what we have at the park, at the park board, we have that.
I don't see that on here.
Yeah.
But if that's changed, I, I'll follow up with the attorney.
Well, and we do that.
Yeah.
And we do that.
Yeah, next time into the microphone, please.
I know, I know. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, I know.
Unruly spectators.
Yeah, so, and, and really, you know, that, that, what you're just commenting on there, that was very much to the point that I, I made earlier where it's important to hear the voices, you know, hear the thoughts on these topics. I mean, often, especially if it's like historic commission thing where we're making, that's the only time that feedback would be ever heard. You know, at least for some of our commissions and what, I mean, our, for our variances and special uses, you can go onto the board where you could, as a resident, come in and say, I really wish I would have been there and I would have said this during P and Z. And I would encourage anybody to do that, if you felt like your voice wasn't heard on the meeting, that you were missed. You know, to make sure that that's in, you know, in the record and, and there are, are, are thoughts that are being, you know, being missed, so. Okay, so I think, do you have everything that, that?
Yeah.
That you need? So, I guess one other thing, is Thursday a fine day?
Yeah.
For everyone? First Thursday a fine, so we don't need to think about changing to any other day? And yours doesn't matter because it's always rolling?
Right, yeah. Consistently rolling.
Yeah, that's, that's so nice. So, okay, so you think you have everything?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody need to make a motion to suggest a time change or anything like that? No, I think this is just, do you want us to make a motion?
You could make a motion to do it.
Okay. So, could I have a motion to present a recommendation to the village board that we adjust our meeting time to the six thirty on the first Thursday of every month?
And consider a teleconference.
And consider a teleconference policy when trustees cannot be here, when commissioners cannot be here physically.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stannick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Riz Brahar?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, with that, oh, staff reports, exactly. Do, do, okay, so that concludes our other business. Do we have any staff reports, Franco?
I let everyone know the complan via email, and just so everyone knows that there's going to be a survey being generated by NIU, who are complan consultants. They're very, excuse me, they're going to be sending us a survey for our review and our input. And once the village as a whole decides it's good to go, we blast it out to all the channels. And sometime in May, we're going to have a special joint meeting with the village board I'm recommending to Erica.
So how will that work? I'm very curious.
NIU will facilitate it. I'm not sure if it'll be a Saturday meeting, something that they like to do because it's quite lengthy. We'll have nice sandwiches and refreshments because it takes a long time to go over stuff because we're going to, it's a lot of information, a lot of input, and you're giving NIU direction of where you want the village to go.
So does that then run as like, I mean, that sounds like it should be an OMA thing, so would that be like recorded and?
Oh, yeah, it's a meeting, we'd have to schedule it.
Yeah, well, in, in two thousand two, when TESCA did it, it, it ended up going two days. So it was on two Saturdays, started at nine, ended at five, and we did two days of that.
It sounds exciting. Actually, it really does. It really does.
And then they're going to go out and do their thing with the information they got from the survey and from the P and Z and the board, and they'll come back at another time and we'll meet again.
Yeah, survey meeting like a questionnaire?
Questionnaire, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I don't have the questions yet.
So we would answer those questions before they give their presentation?
The public would.
All for the public.
You could too, as.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, they're going to mail them to every resident.
They did that, something similar with the development of the riverfront, right?
They did an open house.
Yeah, they did an open house, and there was an online, I think, on your water bill, you could go and find a survey. I believe that's how you did it, yeah. I filled out a survey. So, hey, I mean, it's an exciting time to be on the P and Z, you know, the last time we did it was twenty years ago.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of, a lot of statistics and information has changed since then, so.
Just make sure that the people that we plan on taking their land get the, get the letter in the mail. Well, they. Could be a little dicey. I would assume NIU is going to do similar, TESCA met with all of the key property owners in town. Because it made that part of the, of the complan. Yeah, when I went to that thing up at the, at the recreation center, there were a few people at the table that were chit chatting, and then they gave their presentation, and the, the one guy was totally unaware of it, and he's like, I lived there. So he was not told at all. So I thought that was kind of.
NIU asked for a, a business directory list of emails, so we gave that to them.
So I would say, Steve, they just did the second to last presentation of the Riverfront Master Plan at this previous board meeting. And, and that part was specifically rewarded for those properties, which is, this is a long-term plan, which is more or less, the way I look at it, is there's guidance now for this current village and the village, you know, officials going forward, you know? Over the next twenty years, if these properties become available, we should try to acquire them. That's, that's really what it is. I mean, otherwise, you can't ever like accumulate, you know, land without like kicking somebody out.
Yeah, you just got to let those people know.
Yeah, you know, how long is a property typically held by one person? You know, twenty year period, it is, I think.
Could be a while.
It's, it could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. So anyway, that's.
That's my staff.
Yeah, that's great.
So is that meeting, is that meeting going to be in May? Because there's two dates, I'm out of the country.
Let me know.
They're right here, these are my dates. Email you, okay.
And there's going to be a task force meeting, they're going to create a task force, people want to volunteer, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. There's a lot.
I'll email you.
Yeah, so sorry I did interrupt your staff report.
No, it's okay, I just want to make sure we don't stray from the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Legally.
Yes.
Kelly O'Yella made the next meeting.
Yeah, well, specifically told her she didn't need to be here.
Yeah.
And that, that, there is an April fourth meeting, right?
Yep, that is a, a, no, a public hearing for five ninety Heelys.
Yes, the, that's, you know, reviewing, yes, reviewing.
Park.
Yeah, parking, yeah.
And that'll be at six, the old time, right?
Yeah, well, so we got to, we got to send this to the board for their consideration, because there's a resolution that's passed before the start of each fiscal year that sets the regular.
When is the fiscal, end of June?
So it was passed in December, because we have a January first fiscal year.
Yeah, but it just switched.
Yeah, it's fairly new. So that would need to be amended to show the six thirty dates.
Well, and I think at this point, you would have already sent out the, you're going to have to send out the notice for it, for the public hearing?
Yeah, that's already been noticed.
And then that has a time on it.
Six PM.
Six PM.
Yeah, but they'll, they'll probably, do you think they'll talk about this recommendation on the next meeting? It's the seventeen?
I could turn it around and, and for you. I could do that for you, Cam.
Just slip it under the door.
But it's up to the boss if she wants it on the.
Yeah.
I'll turn it around, but it's up to her if she wants to.
Well.
Talk to the board.
Trustees to push the word.
Yeah, we can get the trustee.
Okay. With that, we are on to our final thing, adjournment.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Readjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second, who is the second?
Myers.
Myers. All right.
Motion is second.
Voice vote, all in favor? Hearing none, motion passes.
Okay, great, fantastic.